Beth, did you hear me? I'm not hearing you.
Are you gonna call the meeting to order?
I was trying to see if you could hear me first.
Yep, we got you.
Okay, let's call the meeting to order. Call roll please.
Joe Meyer.
Here.
Heesling.
Here.
Clinkhammer.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Rice.
Here.
Okay, we'll start with citizens input. Anyone in the chambers, Beth? I think we don't have everybody on Zoom.
Um, no, public if it's in the chambers, it's all staff.
Alrighty, then we will move on. Of course, we'll start then with consent agenda. Do I have anything for separate discussion or a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to pass a consent agenda.
I'll second.
A motion and second, all in favor. I'm sorry, call roll please.
Clinkhammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Joe Meyer.
Aye.
Clinkhammer.
I'll go aye.
Okay, I think I heard five ayes. First new business item is resolution one twenty-seven of two thousand and twenty-three. A resolution approving the pay up number thirteen, the final for the Meadows Clubhouse reconstruction project.
So, we did a final walkthrough of the building today with Andrew Bush of Origin Design, Tom Pins and Mark Weavers of Conlon Construction going over a few of the very minor items that need to be addressed in the clubhouse. These are items such as like commercial carpet tile that, you know, the adhesive isn't quite sticking, little minor, things like that. They have their list and they are going to take care of all of those items. Other than that, big picture stuff, everything's working fantastically. So, I guess with that, I would recommend approval of resolution one twenty-seven, twenty thirteen.
Question, the punchless items that you mentioned, is it a fairly lengthy list? And I know that it can be like twenty dots on.
No, it's a, I mean, I could pretty much rattle them off. There's a couple loose carpet tiles in the golf shop. Um, there's two loose ones in simulator bay one, one in bay two. There's a nail pop by the staircase. There's a screw that broke in the in the kitchen swing door that we have replaced. They're gonna put a different screw into. Um, there's some cabinetry that had an unfinished panel in the golf shop. Um, they're gonna take care of that and they're gonna look at some of the ceiling tile downstairs as some, there was something that was a leak or a drip. We're gonna figure out where that was coming from and then those tiles will be replaced.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions? Go ahead.
Sorry, Jim, you were saying?
I asked for the motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number one twenty-seven of two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
I have motion second on one twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three for the final payout for the Meadows. Any further discussion? Call roll please.
Clink. Aye.
No.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that is approved. Beth, you're breaking up. I'm hearing everybody else and I'm here using the microphone. Next item is resolution one twenty-eight of two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution approving pay up number six for the Hales Mill Road reconstruction project.
Yeah, so very brief update. Um, the plan for tomorrow is Selco is going to install the remaining uh, street signs that need to go in along Hales Mill Road. I think there's four of them total. Um, and then Selco is going to start taking down the detour signage and the road will be opened up sometime tomorrow afternoon. That's the plan. Um, other than that, pay application number six accounts for quite a few items, uh, including core outs, sub base placement, uh, some storm sewer items, sub drain, uh, most of the concrete paving, and then driveway and sidewalk restoration along with a few other things. The total amount for pay up number six is seven hundred fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and nine dollars, eighty-three cents. Uh, with that being said, we currently have a balance to finish plus repaintage of just shy of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And retainage being held is, uh, just over seventy thousand dollars. So unless council has any questions regarding this pay request, MSA recommends approval.
Thank you. Questions, motion?
I'll make the motion to approve resolution one twenty-eight of two thousand and twenty-three, approving pay up number six for the Hales Mill Reconstruction Project. Second.
Rice made a second.
Okay, I did not hear that. I don't know if they use a microphone. All right, motion second by council member Rice. Other discussion?
I think Thorn Seating did a nice job. They came back in and they, uh, I was a little concerned with the top soil that was in front of my house. They came back in and ground that stuff up and before they seeded and it looks like it's, hopefully it's gonna take and everything will be good.
Anything else? Big milestone tomorrow. Thank you, Nathan, everyone that's worked on it, Public Works supporting that, city staff. This is our last big project and we've got Autumn Drive next year and I don't see any reconstruction in the immediate future after that. It's been, it's been a long haul. All right, call roll please.
Clinkhammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Joe Meyer.
Aye.
Heesling.
Aye.
That is approved five zero. We'll move on to the June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three fiscal year financial summary.
Well, it's been a busy year as we continue to do a lot of improvements to our community. Our capital project expenditures for this year were over five and a half million dollars. The major projects were the Hales Mill Road improvement project, which was only partway through June thirtieth, an amount of eight hundred and thirty-two thousand. Um, we had completed the Spring Green Sunset Drive improvement project. Um, that was a mil- a million, one hundred, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars and the biggest one was the renovation to the Meadows Clubhouse in the amount of two million, five hundred thousand dollars. Um, one of the smaller projects that we did were the, um, the fiber project spaces one and two for three hundred and sixty-five thousand, five ninety, which we used ARPA funds for. And then a smaller road project was the Hidden Meadows overlay project. Also to note, um, city received nine hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars in local option sales tax funds. Um, I want you guys to remember that number because when the legislator, um, comes in next session, that's the money that, um, they're coming after. Um, as far as, uh, they want that to go back to the state and have the state divvy out those funds. Uh, my fear there is if it gets under the control of state, the state giveth but the state taketh away. And while these are under the control of the city because of the um, referendum, that's, you know, almost a million dollars that funds our road projects, it funds our police department, it funds our snowplows, it funds our street lighting. Um, the city, uh, there was a little bit of a decrease in our local option sales tax, but that's because they changed the allocation as how they, you know, allowed the, allowed the funds. We got four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-four. That was our second payment of ARPA funds, so overall, we got over eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we received sixty, sixty-eight thousand in SDP funding for the Hales Mill Road tra- project last year, but we'll be receiving another nine hundred and thirty-one thousand in this fiscal year, um, to help fund the Hales Mill Road project. Um, operating funds in the general fund were higher, three hundred and forty thousand from last year. Um, a lot of that was from property tax revenue. Um, road use tax funds were eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight more than last year. That was eight hundred and seventeen thousand for road use tax funds. Water and sewer revenue increased, um, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred dollars. Mostly that was for additional users on the system and an increase in water usage. Solid waste revenue increased twenty thousand, eight sixty-five, and that's because of an increase in the monthly solid waste fee, um, for customers and that's about a dollar per month per user. Expenditures in the general fund, uh, overall, public safety was only seven thousand dollars, um, increased from the prior year. Um, we had for police wages and benefits, that was an increase of forty-six thousand dollars. Um, the increase for, but there's also a decrease in capital expenditures in the police fund of twenty-five thousand, six hundred and five, and that was mostly because we couldn't get the vehicles that were budgeted. Um, fire and ambulance increased thirteen thousand, four hundred, and that's tied to, um, property ta- or property values for the community. Building and housing and safety decreased twenty-two thousand, three hundred. Um, that's mostly due to fewer inspections because we're running out of lots and there's fewer, um, new housing starts. Um, public works, there was an increase of twenty-six thousand, seven ninety-five. Uh, most of that was wages and benefits. Um, street lighting was an increase. Um, snow removal was a decrease. And there was a decrease in maintenance and repair. Um, culture and recreation, there's an increase of fifty-six thousand. Um, fifteen thousand, seven hundred was because of the per capita increase for the library. Um, parks increased forty thousand, five seventy-five. Um, a lot of that was due for contracting with, um, Rad for lawn mowing service and the purchase of new trash receptacles for the parks. In general government, there was an increase of nine thousand, seventy-eight dollars. Building expenses increased or decreased seven thousand, four twenty. Wages and benefits increased, fifteen thousand, three hundred and twenty. Election expense decreased thirteen, eighteen. That's, we do that every other year and legal expenses decreased. Um, in the golf course, um, pro shop expenditures increased fifty-nine thousand, five forty, and wages and benefits were twenty, twenty-seven thousand, one hundred of that. And inventory expenditures were thirty thousand, one seventy. The bar and grill expenditures increased forty-six thousand, three seventy. Wages and salaries increased twelve thousand, fifty in the bar and grill. The food and bev was up, up twenty-six thousand and operating supplies were up ninety-three hundred. Um, the banquet decreased seventy-one thousand, seven ninety, but, um, that was due to discontinuing the banquet department operations. Grounds increased twenty-eight thousand, two fifty. Um, a lot of that had to do with, um, increase in salary and wages, but then some of the other expenditures did decrease. Um, road use tax, there was a decrease of a hundred and forty-two thousand, and that was related because the prior year we had purchased the street sweeper out of that fund. Um, for utilities, um, the water utility decreased sixty thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. Um, most of that was for funding, um, capital projects decreased a hundred and nine thousand and, um, continue on doing our water meter project and that increased twenty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. And wages and benefits increased nineteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. Overall, the sewer decreased three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. Again, a lot of that had to do with, um, infrastructure. Um, sewer maintenance decreased one fifty-nine, eight hundred, I think, and wages and benefits increased fifty-eight thousand, five fifty. Um, probably one of the good notes here too is our debt service. As of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, the city had four million, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and one dollars in outstanding, um, DO debt compared to four thousand, seven eighty-three in two thousand and twenty-two. Um, the city is at eleven point two five percent of its bonding capacity. Um, where our, if you look at, we have four million dollars outstanding in debt. Our debt capacity is thirty million, four twenty-three, one seventy-five. I've got some, you know, graphs here that show overall, um, where we're at, where property taxes are about twenty-seven percent of our revenues. Um, charges for fees and services, which would be our, our utilities and our, and actually the golf course are forty-two percent of our, um, operations. Then we have our tax increment financing, local office of sales tax. I mean, there's a, there's a big piece of the pie there. Um, and then our disbursements, um, you can see where we spend a lot of our funds, um, in the area of the, you know, capital project. So, we do a good job of, you know, keeping up with our infrastructure and, um, keeping our community nice. Any questions?
I have a question. Um, for the, uh, the banquet facility, we have that on here because we just discontinued because of the thing. So next year, that one we can be part of factoring in, right?
Well, we compare, when we're comparing, um, it'll, it'll still probably be there to some degree. Cause right now, we have, we had a full year of the banquet in twenty-two and a part year in twenty-three. So in twenty-four, there would still be some banquet facility there for comparison purposes, but not as much.
And then the, the question for Jeremy then would be, when will we start to see, uh, something in here as far as the simulators?
Jeremy, you should go to, so Jim can hear you.
Uh, simulator revenue is being reported into, it's got its own GL code right now. Um, you'd be able to find that in financial reports. Uh, it'll, you'll see, obviously, we open in the spring. People are more anxious to get outside than inside. Uh, this coming winter, you'll see that impact of that.
Yeah, that's what I was probably more interested in is to see what sort of a revenue stream we get out of in the winter.
It has its own separate GL code. We'll, it'll be able to be tracked.
Okay, that's all. Thank you very much.
Well, Jeremy, I have a couple of questions. Just one question. Um, Beth alluded that there was twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three thousand in golf cart lease savings. How much, how many months does that represent and what's the projected savings for next year? And I guess then when do we have to replace the carts?
Uh, we typically, I, if I remember correctly, we pay roughly just over, I think, thirty-six thousand dollars a year is what we had been paying. So we paid twenty-one thousand, um, or we saved twenty-one thousand this year because that lease was up and we then now own the carts. Our plan is historically, we'll try and run those for a couple of years because again, little to no cost, you're gonna have, you, we, you'll see a little bit of increase in maintenance costs as these things wear and parts break and whatever. Um, but that's really when we can start to make some money. Um, I would hope that we'd be able to get at least another two or three seasons out of them.
Great, thank you.
Heard for your question, I pulled up the monthly financial reports and under the revenue report, um, down here, there's two line items, one zero zero five, four four five, four one, four five one eight, that's simulator fees, and four five one nine, which is simulator league. So, these two line items will be where you'll see the simulator income going in. Thank you. Following, um, financial summary I just gave you, um, we have the annual audit report, we have the annual financial report, the annual urban renewal report, and the annual street financial report. And, um, basically, it's taken our monthly financial reports and configuring them to, uh, meet, uh, the requirements of the state and the audit requirements.
Okay, any other questions or comments on the financial summary report that Beth put together? All right, good job, Beth. Um, very well written. A lot of good information in there. So, if there's nothing else, then we'll move on to the next item, which is resolution one twenty-nine of two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution approving FY twenty-three annual audit report.
Jim, do we need to make a motion to accept the, the financial reports? I, I saw there's an action item that says motion, so if we need a motion to accept them, I'll make.
I, it was just a summary, so I don't, I don't see a motion on. I'm looking on board docs. Maybe you're, I just did a PDF dump of it.
But the, the financial highlights, there's no need to accept that, but there is a need to accept the, um, finance, the D, E, F and G.
Okay, I just saw in the board docs, motion, recommended, action was a motion, so I was just following up on that. Thank you.
So we need nothing, no action on C, Beth, correct? We're on to D.
Correction.
Okay, all right, so back to, uh, we have resolution one twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution approving FY twenty twenty-three annual audit report.
I read through the whole thing and I'll make a motion to accept resolution one twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty, uh, fiscal year annual audit report.
Second.
I have motion and second. Any discussion on one twenty-nine? Call roll please.
Clinkhammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Joe Meyer.
Aye.
Heesling.
Aye.
Okay, that's approved five zero. The next item is resolution one thirty, two thousand and twenty-three, resolution approving FY twenty twenty-three State of Iowa annual financial report.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution one thirty of two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll second.
I have motion second. Any discussion? Call roll please.
Clinkhammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Joe Meyer.
Aye.
Heesling.
Aye.
That is approved five zero. Item F, resolution one thirty-one of one twenty, one thirty-one of two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution approving FY twenty twenty-three annual urban renewal report.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution one thirty-one of two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion? Call roll?
Clinkhammer.
I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead. Call roll.
Miller.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Joe Meyer.
Aye.
Heesling.
Aye.
That is approved. Then we have resolution one thirty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution approving FY twenty twenty-three annual street financial report.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number one thirty-two dash, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Call roll please.
Clinkhammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Joe Meyer.
Aye.
Heesling.
Aye.
Thank you. That's approved five zero. Next item was request a couple council members to review, uh, speed limits, uh, specifically in Hales Mill and potentially other city collector streets. Um, staff has had not time to do any research on this. We did not, uh, put any effort into drafting a, you know, a resolution, I'm sorry, an ordinance, but Beth did include the ordinance as it's today. So it's just out there for discussion based on your feedback and your direction, then staff may go back and update any ordinance, ordinances as, as directed for, uh, future review and passage. So I don't know who wants to start. Um, I think Craig, you had called me about this.
I, uh, had asked Tom prior to the meeting and he'd already come prepared, so I didn't want to steal his thunder, but Tom, how many tickets have we issued in this area?
Yeah, so what I did is I seen this was on the agenda, so I just went back to the past five years. Uh, in two thousand and twenty-three, we have written fourteen speeding tickets, sixty-seven warning citations, and there's only been fifteen accidents. In two thousand and twenty-two, last year, we wrote thirty speeding tickets, a hundred and fifty-five warnings, and there was twenty-eight accidents. Uh, twenty twenty-one, we wrote twenty-seven speeding tickets, a hundred and twelve warning tickets for speed, and there was twenty-six accidents. Twenty twenty, sixteen citations for speed, fifty warnings, and there was twenty-two accidents. Two thousand and nineteen, forty-five tickets, ninety-nine warnings, and twenty-four accidents.
Tom, just a question. When you, what, the accidents are, if, if you have an accident at the corner of Hales Mill and Ed, that be in those statistics? Is that where the predominant, the accidents predominantly occur?
They're spread out all over the city, you know. Uh, what I was looking at when I went through these accidents, we can break it down and I didn't have time to do that, is basically say, what was the cause of these accidents? What was the major factor in most of these accidents? Most of them were like stop sign violations, but I, everyone I was thinking, trying to figure out this year, what, what I worked for accidents, I can recall where the tire came off the lady's car and hit another car. That counts as an accident. We had a four wheeler with a scrap that broke off the trailer and hit a light bulb. That counts as an accident. But not all of these are vehicle versus vehicle, head on, side swipe. It's just, they're accidents. Again, everyone I can think of, speed was not the major cause of these accidents.
Tom, are these numbers for Hales Mill Road or for citywide?
This was citywide. I did not limit it down to roads. These were just the numbers for the whole city accidents and citations. I could go back and I would literally have to go through every citation to give you a location where speeds were. I can tell you from my experience, most my citations for speed are on the western end of the city. And that's just because it's more rural out there. People just think, hey, I can go forty-five, fifty miles an hour out here. Not, not hurting.
I remember in the day when I moved out to Edsbury, that twenty-five mile an hour speed limit was a re- really good revenue source, so.
Yeah.
Now, a, uh, we don't, we don't seem to issue a lot of tickets for speed.
Yeah, we do not. Plus, it still could be. Yeah. Now, when we had the, uh, when we collected data from the radar sign on, uh, in different places throughout things going on in Hales Mill and that, uh, what did, on, on the Hales Mill.
Craig, is your microphone on?
I'll move it closer.
Thank you.
The, see, I seem to recall the, the speed on Hales Mill averaged forty-two miles per hour. Is that correct?
That could be, I couldn't say for the average off the top of my head right now. I was trying to pull that data before the meeting and it just takes a little longer to go through all that.
And I guess that's, that's really where I'm coming from is, I mean, we don't expect our police force to stop everybody that's speeding. I mean, we have only so many people, so many officers, and, and there's only so many shifts. So, wh- while they're watching speed in one area, what else is going on in another area of the city? I think it's just that we've gotten, uh, a lot of the drivers have gotten a little lax in obeying what thirty-five mile an hour speed limit means. That means that's, uh, in terms of that's the maximum speed. We often see that thirty-five is just suggested and they'll, they'll be doing the forty-two. At least, this is what I've seen and I've had some comments from a number of my neighbors who have also said that it would be nice if we could get the traffic to slow down a little bit on Hales Mill.
Well, again, I think those radar signs have been a big help. It kind of gives positive feedback to drivers of, hey, this is your speed, this is how fast you're going. And we see that a lot. We, we download those signs. It tells us how many people are going through there, when high speed times are, and it kind of gives us that data of, hey, maybe this is when we should be doing a little more of that enforcement. A- and granted, speed is one of those biggest areas where officers use their discretion. It's like, okay, if somebody's going forty-two miles an hour and a thirty-five, am I gonna take the time to pull them over and issue a warning? Probably not, but it's also that time where, okay, do I see another violation as well? Do I see a brake light out and they're speeding? Okay, now I'm gonna pull them over and possibly give them a warning for both of them. And give them that reinforcement that, hey, we do need to slow down.
Tom, do, uh, do we have the speed limit signs, the radar signs, usually they're only in one direction on the streets, or do we have them in both directions on?
Right now, we have them just one direction. They do monitor both directions, but you're talking, when you drive by, you can only see them in one direction. And that's something we're, we're, we're looking into is, can we order more radar signs and put them around in absolutely every neighborhood? You know, wants them. Now we have the one that we had on Hales Mill, we put that on the radar trailer and we can use that a little bit more around town. We could buy some more radar signs to put up. I'd like to see some more on, on Cyple Road because right now there's just one headed south. I'd like to put one north, more on Asbury Road.
Spring Green would be another place.
Yep, we got one in Spring Green and Greencraft right now, but there's, yep, exactly. So, more signs would be a good, good way to remind people. And I know Blaine and I have talked about, we've gone around and put up more ra- uh, speed limit signs around the city as well.
Yes, part of my thought process in, in asking Jim to put this on the agenda is, I mean, we look at where Asbury is now. When this, uh, ordinance was first put into place, what was the population of the community? We've grown a lot since then. We've grown a lot since then, and what we're also looking at is the fact that these collector streets, such as Cyple and Hales Mill, they're no longer just a farm-to-market type of road. It's, these have now developed where they have a number of different housing developments coming off, off of them, onto those streets. And in looking at that, you've increased your traffic, you've increased the potential for accidents on there, you also are looking at more pedestrian traffic too, which can create another wrinkle into, uh, the speed. I mean, if you can reduce the speed of a vehicle, uh, I believe, uh, stat, statistics from the National Highway Traffic, Traffic Safety Administration, I mean, they say that if you can reduce the speed, you can, uh, reduce the fatality rate of the accident quite a bit, going from just even a forty mile an hour speed limit down to a twenty-five percent, I think it went from eighty percent fatality down to twenty-five percent. So I guess that's just what I'm trying to look at here is, I don't, I don't want to become a speed trap again, we, we remember what those days were like. I had one of my neighbors remind me of that, of the old, uh, city hall or the old judge, whoever it was up there, yeah.
Uh, we did have a reputation.
And, but they said, you know, traffic did move slower then, but there was a lot less traffic. Maybe, I think it's something that we should look at, uh, maybe updating this a little bit, and trying to, I mean, this might eliminate some confusion, uh, for people, if they aren't sure if they're supposed to do twenty-five or thirty-five in a school zone, if we put it to twenty-five, a- at, uh, twenty-four seven, that's, that could help with the, relieve that confusion. Uh, you look at what Dubuque has, we often hear from other council members citing, uh, Dubuque as an example, that as you leave Asbury, you will be traveling on Asbury Road briefly at thirty-five miles an hour from our eastern city limits until you get to the, uh, funeral home, and then the speed drops down to thirty. That speed then travels at thirty until you reach into more downtown, uh, areas of Dubuque and older sections where it drops to twenty-five around, about the American Legion, so. Uh, maybe thirty-five isn't the answer all the way through Asbury, on Asbury Road or Hales Mill or Cyple, maybe we should look at some lower speed limits to adjust more for what the traffic is now, and what the, uh, what we are, what we've had happen as the city has, we've grown.
Tom, do we have any fatalities in the city in the past year or the last years when in your?
The last fatality was not within the city of Asbury, even though if you look at the Iowa crash data, it, it will show it, and that was the one out by Cass Lane, out by Bud Road and between Lewis Road out there where the gentleman possibly even had a heart attack, we're, still haven't heard because the county handled that one, uh, other than that, one like where, uh, Comer out in his subdivision, uh, rolled and hit a tree. Uh, driving an old car, brakes went out, rolled into a tree, he was there standing talking to the paramedics saying, I'm okay, I was okay, and down he went. I think he poured his, he ordered another heart issue.
So in your opinion, with no fatalities and very few accidents over all our streets, you feel a need to lower the speed at this time?
At this time, I do not, again, our accidents are down to fifteen, granted, we haven't made it all the way through winter, you don't, never know what our weather's going to be, that contributes a lot to our accidents, icy roads, snow. Public Works does a great job of keeping those things clear, but it's those first few minutes where those accidents happen. Again, you know, Kurt's, or Craig's point about, well, what's your criteria to lower that speed limit, you know, what, what number are we l- looking for, what's the trigger that's going to say, yes, we need to lower that speed limit down to thirty miles an hour? I don't have that answer for you, you know, would it be more accidents, would it be more citations, I guess that's what I'm looking for, is what, what's our cause to lower that, that threshold of our speed?
I, I guess.
Well, if you don't want to be a speed, well, if you can lower the, the speed limit, people drive, tend to drive on the road based on the conditions of the road and, and the traffic, so if you're going to lower the speed limit, if it feels comfortable at thirty-five, you know, lower it to thirty, we're going to, then they're going to have to start writing a whole lot of tickets, or we haven't accomplished anything by lowering it, so if you don't want that reputation, I mean, make it twenty-five, but make it thirty, and I think you're gonna, if you're going to do it, then you need to enforce it, and revenues are going to go up.
I, I think one of the things that Tom mentioned earlier that, that I believe in is the radar signs really do help, and, and I do see people, once they see it flashing at them, uh, uh, slow down, but what, what I would like to do is maybe consider, if we can go through the Dubuque Racing, uh, get a grant, and I'd like to have radar signs on the collector streets going both ways, and I think that would be the best help.
Absolutely, that's what we did in the past to, to, to fund some of those projects, however, the recent years, the Dubuque Racing Association's kind of changed their outlook.
You won't get any, you won't get any with DRA, so there may be some other safety grants, but the area is not going to, not going to fund something like this.
And is that the recording signs or?
Yes, those are data collection.
I mean, I, I think that's, I think it's good that we would look at adding those signs, but the question is, I mean, I think people still have the mentality of that if the speed limit is thirty-five, I can go forty-two, use, again, it's.
Yeah, I don't know if it's mentality, I mean, s- speed, we're, we're all guilty, I mean, if we're going to leave here tonight on our way home, you're going to be going down Hales Mill, Spring Green, and you're going to hit twenty-seven miles an hour without even thinking. Would you get a citation? Absolutely, again, that falls back to the officer discretion, hey, was it dangerous, was it intentional, was, what other factors go into? That, that's, that's always, you know, where's that threshold, you know, what's the officer going to pull you over, okay, said, hey, we're human beings, we're going to look at you and go, okay, is that car going thirty-two because it was going down the hill a little bit, just didn't apply the brakes, gas is expensive, maybe, maybe I'm going to coast a little bit more right now versus putting on my brakes just to get back on the throttle and get back up the hill before the stop sign.
The, the one thing I noticed though too is that a lot of people, and it's confusing when you come into Asbury with this, the first sign that you see coming into Asbury says twenty-five miles an hour, which is the, from Dubuque is, which is a school zone.
Correct.
And I don't see as many people slowing down in the school zones when it's, when the, even with the light flashing, so I'm not sure that, and, and I don't know what kind of money would be involved to replace all the thirty-five mile an hour speed limit signs with thirty, I would rather spend that money on the radar signs.
I couldn't tell you, that'd be a lame question, a couple of what signs cost. There again, we went through, we did add some along Asbury Road, and I, actually, I see it the other way, but of course, I'm in a police car, usually when I get behind somebody, they're going twenty-five miles an hour, even when the light's not flashing, because they assume it's twenty-five.
You know, instinctively, you see that sign, you slow down, the normal person would. I don't see sense to upheave the whole city or even a couple of streets when you can settle it with just a sign, a flashing speed limit sign.
And again.
It proves me, you know, and I see it, I slow down.
And again, that's something I will direct my officers to do, let's get out there, let's hit those speeds a little harder, it is at school time, we're out there trying to do that, just, I, I know we've been a little busy with things, so like you said, it's one of those things that just kind of falls in the wayside.
One of the other things possibly you could do is, after you look at the data from the, the speed sign, the radar signs, if you see a, a, a time where the, it's, speeds are picking up, maybe then that would be a good time to.
Absolutely.
Set a car out there to, you know, pull a few, good, when word gets out that you're checking them out.
And that's usually what it takes, is presence and a little reminder that, hey, they're out there enforcing things. Especially like when Hales Mill opens here, that'll be one of those areas, hey, we need to sit there and monitor the speed and let people know, hey, it's open, it's still thirty-five miles an hour here.
Studies have shown that, uh, I mean, I have to commend the city for what we've done in being able to improve our street system, uh, everything from all these roads that we've already mentioned. Uh, but the problem with that is that people, when, as studies have shown, that people, when they see a wider and straight street, that they have more of a tendency to go faster. And so, even though they might think I'm doing the speed limit, they're going to be going faster.
Yeah, they're nice smooth roads.
They have a, they have a co, a feeling of confidence in, uh, the road and their own driving skills and what they're doing. So I think it's, I mean, it's a double-edged sword by having, getting rid of old potholes.
Yeah, absolutely, we don't have no speed bumps out there to slow everybody down, I agree.
So what do you, what do you want, you know, what do you want staff to do, just please step up enforcement and continue to monitor, or is there a compelling reason for staff to go and draft, draft an ordinance for review?
Like, what I'm looking at is, I mean, living on a high-volume street like this, I mean, it's not a cul-de-sac, it's not a dead end. Uh, it's a major neck or street, I know it's my choice that we live there, but my point is that I see this on a daily basis, and one of the things I've also seen is that because of these speeds, when people are trying to use the pedestrian crosswalks with lights, we still have people that are blowing through those, I mean, it, it's not safe to be able to cross some of those busier streets, even using the crosswalks. So maybe if the speeds are slowed down, it will allow those to work more efficiently that way as well too.
That's an enforcement issue. You can put any speed you want on anywhere, if they're going to break it, that's not up to us to say, if you go twenty miles an hour and you run through something, that's up to Tom and his people's going to enforce, that's not up to us.
Again, they can only be so many places at one time, the others, but the other side of it is, if they are traveling at a slower speed, they will have more time to react to that light turning on, to a pedestrian being in the crosswalk.
Craig, you're making an assumption that a five miles an hour slower is actually going to slow them down, and I, I personally don't think it will.
It, not if you go with the theory that the street's wider and newer, they're going to go faster, so if you put fifteen, they're, they're still going to go faster, it, I, I don't see where the.
I mean, it's, it's a cart and a horse thing, I guess, I mean, we can, we can try to use more signs, but I think we, we already know what time we are going to see the higher levels of traffic and the higher speeds. That's, that's not going to surprise any of us, I mean, when Dubuque did their traffic study on many of their streets, you saw a lot of results that didn't surprise anybody who drives at all in the, in the Dubuque area. I guess that's the same thing we have here, do we simply collect more data, or do we try to do something to, uh, possibly make sure we don't have fatality before, I mean, it's a cart and a horse.
Take all the cars away, we wouldn't have to worry about fatalities at all. I, I don't see the data for it, I don't see the reason for it, um, I think we should move on with getting some more signs, as Russ talked about, to help Tom monitor what's going on on the collector streets, but I personally have not experienced any of that on Radford or Ecock. I don't travel Hales Mills very much, so that could be something I don't know about, but I, I just don't have the data for it, and I don't have the recommendation from the chief to do it.
From the discussion that I'm, I'm hearing, it's, uh, it's not likely that we're going to change any speed limit, but it, it should be noted here that for safety purposes, it, it's good to have it out in front of us to at least take a look at it. Your recommendation, Tom, would be that we don't do anything at this particular point in time?
I would say, looking at the data that I have here, our numbers are down actually. A lot of that had to do with stop signs and everything out there, and I'm also thinking, you know, eventually our traffic patterns could change out here with roundabouts. Maybe at that time, maybe we look at things, and that's going to slow more traffic down, because now we have to slow down to go through some of those roundabouts. So it might just be something to, to tuck away from, like, kind of look into the future and see how that affects.
One other thing that, that we've been doing with speed limits, um, and just a question, this may be from Blaine, but will we be taking out those temporary, the, the speed bumps? Or could we leave those in and just take them out in the wintertime so that they're out of your, out of the way for the snowplows, but leave them in in the summer?
Yeah, you can do what you want, I mean, council directs staff leave those in, you're talking about the ones in Floyd Creek?
Where do we go from here?
Well, do you want to direct me to order more signs, and I can definitely direct it, be directed to, hey, let's put a little more emphasis on speed enforcement, and we can go that route, see how that, uh, how the numbers change.
How many more signs would you recommend?
I, again, definitely, I'm thinking right now, the one on Hales Mill, I'd like to put one of, so when the traffic's traveling, I guess, to the south, coming up from going by Park Place and everything, one right in that area, and then possibly another one I'd like to see out on Cyple Road. So at least two, but I can easily find other spots around the city for me, we have a lot of people asking for it, yep. Yep, we have one right there by Clover Lane, but really in between, uh, Burroke there, all the way out west, we don't have anything from there.
One, one of the things that, that I see a lot of, now that traffic is right routed because of Hales Mill, is there's a lot of people genuflecting if they do that at stop signs.
Oh, absolutely.
So is this something we want to look at, getting, uh, grant money, I know it was talked about, uh, using grant money or something to purchase these signs, or is this something that we just want to go out and purchase through the city and?
Again, that would be a discussion, Beth and I can sit down, look at our budget, see what funds are available, and find that, those funds, yes, that's something we could look at.
Oh, I, I certainly, I certainly would be on board with.
Yep, that may take funds away from other things, so.
All right, so I'm hearing there is an overwhelming support of lowering the speed limits at this time, just, uh, increased, increased presence by the police, some enforcement and some signage where funds allow, or we can get grant money and, and continue to monitor the situation. Is that where we're going to leave it?
I'm okay if we, yeah, yes, if we, uh, increase monitoring, look at the, uh, additional signage, and I mean, I, I think that we have a fantastic police force, they do a great job of enforcement, uh, they do a nice job of main, being the face sometimes of Asbury, because that's who the residents often get their, uh, personal interactions with, uh, whether it's good or bad, and, uh.
I get, you could, you could, we could direct you to write enough speeding tickets to cover the signs, right?
Yes, unfortunately, it doesn't work that way.
Well, I would like to comment, I do like that you give more warnings than you do tickets.
Yeah, again, it's one of those areas where we try to use discretion and just try to be a friendly, hey, slow it down. Again, make it a positive interaction with law enforcement, always in a negative.
Well, and Tom and I, I, I know Gene was like this, I mean, if you're doing thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, and a thirty-five, maybe a warning, if you're doing forty-five to fifty, there's nothing to discuss, you're getting a ticket, right, I mean, that discretion is in the gray area, uh, you don't tolerate crazies.
If the, uh, traffic sign flashes forty-five and we set it up to deploy stop sticks?
If we can get total enforcement, that is an option as well.
What's, what's the maximum over the speed limit the signs can, can record, because I, I remember that.
High as a.
Oh, you can set them, it'll, it'll record every speed.
It'll record, every speed, yeah. But it, it stops flashing, and the way we have it set up, so it's not, it's a game, so we can get high scores. I want to see Blaine out there running his orange light.
All right, well, we'll, uh.
Whatever, but I, I'd make a motion to buy at least two more signs, help monitor wherever you think you need to put them.
Don't you think we should check for the money first to see if they can get a grant?
No, I don't think we should, if, if it's a priority for safety, and we can't find four thousand dollars, we're doing something.
Good point.
I think Beth and Tom can look at the budget and find something.
Paying way, way too much anyway.
Yeah, that's where I thought we were, is, I, I thought we were at the point where you were going to get with Beth and you were going to figure out where the money came from.
Well, that would be an option, yes, but again, I think if we sit down, I think we can find some, some.
So.
All right, let's let staff work on, work on the signage, center funding sources, what we can do, and we'll continue to monitor the situation, is that, is that good?
The motion by Bob Reich for the purchase, two additional signs, are we going to have a second on that?
All right, no second?
Second.
I don't understand why we have the discussion. I don't understand why we have the discussion and we have some council people who think we need to lower speeds, but they won't get another sign. I just, Beth, full discussion.
All right, there's not, not a second, we're gonna move on. Okay, didn't hear anything. Um, thanks, David, it's a Luther Manor receivership. Uh, we just kinda wanted to bring in the loop. Um, most of what we heard is a matter of public, public record. Uh, we did meet with the, the attorney whose firm is handling the receivership and I'll let Beth give some updates on that discussion. One thing I do wanna call your attention to is if you recall, um, as a council, I'll recall who was sitting at the table at that time, but you did approve a four-legged roundabout at the intersection of Hales Mill and Asbury Road, that would continue south through some, some residential properties and then connect with Radford Road. Um, the Radford Road intersection that Asbury, as we know it today, would have been abandoned. About six months after you took that action, Luther Manor came forward and screamed, you never told us about it, you can't do this. You're going right through our development, we don't like it, we don't want it in there, you're gonna ruin our development. So you as a council listened and, and you changed direction and went to two, three-legged roundabouts. Um, it is our opinion that, that development that was, you know, prohibiting that four-legged roundabout is probably not going to happen. That land will be up for sale. And so I did want, again, just bring it to your attention with discussion, anything you can do tonight. But if you wanna go back to a four-legged roundabout, you know, and, and look at that, we can put everything together again. But, uh, your primary reason for not, for abandoning that option is, is, is no longer in play. The Luther Manor property, we do not believe will be sold to a developer, we continue to develop in the manner which Luther Manor had proposed. And actually, Beth, I think in the two plus years and maybe longer that we've had that discussion with them, we kept asking them for a plan. One never came forward, yet they stood in front of you and complained about how the city's roundabout plan encroached and, and impeded their development, yet they never did come up with a plan. So I think we know why, but again, I wanted to get in the, in, in front of you to start thinking about that roundabout. If you did wanna change direction again, I don't think you're wrong to do so. You did it based on the data available at the time and that scenario does not exist and probably will not. And we as a city will need to know where to go if we're gonna start acquiring properties. These are doing now rather than let receivership liquidate the property and they have to come back and acquire and get into an eminent domain proceeding potentially. So Beth, do you wanna, um, just kinda give some updates on what we know and what we were told and maybe what we anticipate will happen?
Like Jim said, a lot of it, this is, is just, you know, um, public knowledge that came out, you know, in the paper on Tuesday, August twenty-ninth. So, um, Luther Manor is, you know, definitely gonna be going in a little bit different direction. I put in the, um, packet, the, uh, exhibit, you know, that showed the roundabout, um, connecting to, uh, Radford Road and the properties that we would be looking, you know, to acquire. I think the benefit of, you know, if, as this comes another opportunity is that, um, we were also looking at a three-legged roundabout at Hales Mill Road and a three-legged roundabout at Radford Road. And that, how, how that impacted the daycare. And that now takes, you know, the daycare, you know, out of the, would take the daycare out of the picture. And, you know, that was gonna be a, you know, a challenge and the fact that there's limited daycare, you know, facilities that are available. And that's another reason, I think, to, you know, come back and, um, review this, this option.
Yeah, and some other things to be aware of and it does tie into the roundabout, but, you know, the Luther Manor Board is, is, is out of control of the entire Luther Manor holdings. Um, the, uh, the intention is to sell everything off. The, what do you say, the, this firm is, is managing a hundred and seventy long-term care facilities right now? That shows the state of the industry. Uh, he, he believes that, you know, Luther Manor Properties, at least the, the long-term care facilities or whatever they have, are probably gonna be a hard sell again because there's so many in receivership. But these outlined properties, uh, definitely be something that would be an easy sell and we look for them to become available. So it, it is time of the essence, maybe, but again, you know, if, if you're going to go back to the original plan, we should have meaningful discussion on that sooner rather than later. And any other property at Luther Manor, we let them know that, you know, we as a city are interested in it. And we will, uh, you know, try to get the A D C in a position, they're meeting tomorrow, to be able to act. There's some, some conversation from the last meeting with the loan, loan arrangement and loan, line of credit. So this is kind of a tipping point for the city, you know, they, they did a lot of good things, but they also took some pretty prime properties that in my opinion would have been maybe better utilized in other ways, but that's okay. It's, that was a decision made many, many years ago. But you look at the area shaded in green, um, that all could be acquired and converted into office retail, some, some things that, you know, some amenities we have in the city, probably grow the tax base in that they would be commercial property. I know it's, the rollback is coming back, but generally, commercial property is worth more on a square footage basis than residential. So there's a lot of things that could come of this now that we go back to the four-legged roundabout. So again, just wanted to get in front of you and let you know that there's an opportunity in front of us that may slip away.
Uh, Jim, and for the rest of the council, it was then and it is now still my preferred way to, uh, to reconcile this traffic issue here and take care of, uh, Radford Road. So whatever, whatever we need to do to move forward with this particular plan, I say, go for it.
Well, another thing to keep in mind, Karen, we talked about phase approach. So everything that we've talked about for the three-legged roundabout at Asbury and Hales Mill does not change whether you, whether you change direction literally and go to the four-legged. For the most part, that construction, the acquisition, everything we need to do that three-legged roundabout. And Nate's probably, so it could, could not have said, but it doesn't appreciably change the design, the cost or, or acquisition. So you can continue with what you're doing with the three-legged roundabout and still have that long-term plan for the four-legged many, many years in the future. Because, you know, we have no timeline for the second roundabout anyhow. And I don't wanna think about the cost of acquiring Frog Hollow. But we will, uh, revisit the numbers if you, if you want, we'll bring those back for a future discussion.
I, I know I'm in, in favor of it. And as far as going with the, the two three-legged roundabouts, I've always thought that, um, that this is just gonna create more congestion, uh, having two roundabouts so close together. I look at the one that's over by Finley Hospital and, uh, the Hardigs there. And I, I just, I just see something similar happening to us only with, uh, with greater congestion. I, I think that the four-legged way is the way to go and to take care of that Radford Road problem. And this has always been, um, favored in my mind. So a- again, whatever, whatever we need to do to make this happen, bring it back, have a discussion, uh, you know, whatever, but that's, that's where I stand.
It is a much cleaner option. I, I will agree with that. Uh, it was simply because of some of the acquisition issues we would have encountered with, uh, Luther Manor, that we looked at the two three-legged ones. Uh, it is much cleaner and yes, that is a terrible, I, I feel it's a lot. It was poor planning on the, on the city of Dubuque and putting those two, uh, roundabouts in such close proximity. I would hate to, uh, make an error like that as well.
Anyone else have a, a comment that, you know, staff can take in and?
Well, we've already approved two, so if we're gonna change that, I'd need to know the numbers on acquisitions. This goes from a two million pro, dollar project to a fifteen million. I think we need to know that before we say which one we'd rather do.
Well, I didn't ask you that. I'm not asking you to, to commit. I'm just asking if you want us to put the effort into revisiting the four-legged roundabout. That's all I'm really asking right now.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but when we approved the two, that was because the four-legged one was not, not a, uh, a viable alternative at that particular point in time. Because originally, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but originally, didn't we decide that we were gonna go this way? And we only opted to go with the two roundabouts because this wasn't viable any longer.
Because of Luther Manor's request, correct?
Correct.
Well, that's what I'm saying, the dollar amounts, because Luther Manor bought all those homes. So I'd need to know that if we're gonna bring it back.
I think, I, I think that we approved tonight the design for MSA to do the three-legged and as Jim alluded to, the three-legged, first three-legged one, even if we put that in, we can still go to this route be, before we go to the two, the two of them, right? We've only, we, we put two hundred fifty, we approved two hundred fifty-one thousand dollars for design of the first one. And that one can still be utilized even if we go to the four-legged.
Yeah, so we can basically design this one to accommodate for the fourth leg to the south like that. Drawing shows, if that's the way you guys would wish to proceed. I mean, that would just be something then that probably in a future phase you would do. The roadway then that brings Radford West to the Hales Mill intersection.
Okay, if this, if this council, it's okay then.
Sorry, Jim, I, I just thought it'd be a comment that, yeah, you guys are on the right track. That the best option functionality-wise would be what's on the screen up there with the four-legged roundabout. And then what I recall is similar to what you're discussing where we went to the two roundabout option, which was still going to function according to, you know, Ben's calculations and imagery that he had brought in before, Ben Wilkinson. Um, and that would function just fine as well. But this is the, the ultimate option for functionality to have a one intersection.
I think I, I agree with Bob too, that we, we need, need to know what the costs are to acquire that property. Offset the, the savings that we would have by not having to, to buy Frog Hollow and put that one in. So that's an offset. So, I mean, just what the net, net's gonna be to do it this way.
Yeah, we're, we're working on that and I don't want, I, I don't wanna scare the residents, you know, there's a couple in that lower right-hand corner, you know, that they, you know, they, they were across stairs and then they weren't and they could be back in that. We need to be, uh, step lightly with them. Um, I, I mean, honestly, this could be ten or fifteen years out before the fourth leg goes in. So, uh, it's more about long-term planning. I mean, we've talked about the three-legged and that's still two plus, two plus years out to be that constructed, so.
And Jim, I don't, I don't think all, all the stuff, all, all the stuff in the green has to be acquired for this four-legged one. So the two ho, two homes that aren't property of Luther Manor, they look like they're still far enough away from the roundabout that they could exist as they are now. Everything else, there, there's only one home in here that's not owned. Well, they're, actually then, the only house that's not owned by, uh, Luther Manor would be the Cruzy property.
Yeah, you're right. We don't need everything and we certainly didn't have to buy any, any, you know, take any significant for the three-legged. So let us go to work. Um, I, I, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, you didn't think we were crazy to, to think this was a possibility that to come back for discussion, given the change in Luther Manor's uh, plans or the lack thereof now.
What, did you guys get a sense that Luther Manor was, wants to unload those properties?
Well, the attorney does. I mean, so, you know, Beth and, to, to wrong, but that's their, that's what they're there for. They are to liquidate everything so that the, 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 uh, the creditors can be paid. And there's three different creditors, depending on which one's in there. I don't, I remember how it laid out or who has what. But, uh, the point is that, you know, this area is, is easily to sell, to sell, uh, you know, a seventeen million dollar building or both buildings, what they have over on Hillcrush Road is a, a whole different beast. So thi, this one definitely is up, going to be up, put up for sale and probably sooner than later.
Besides the, uh, dollar figures, I'd like to know from Nate, uh, construction time, if we just do a three and then construction when we wanted to do a four again later.
Right, okay.
Well, just.
All right, yeah, if there's anything else, then that, that's where it's at. It's, it's the receivership. We will go back and, 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 and try to, uh, touch up the numbers. They'll all be adjusted for inflation, they're at least a couple of years old. And try to give you a picture of where this would land. If you go back to, there's gotta be a reason we went to the four-legged in the first place. So, I mean, if it made sense two years ago, it makes sense today in my mind, even though it, it probably did cost more two years ago, it's gonna cost more four years from now. But there was a reason you chose this, this layout. And I don't think that reason has changed appreciably or has changed at all.
Three-legged, and then we wanna do the fourth at another time.
Absolutely, you, I'm sorry, Bob.
The people on Hales Mills, we've already put them through a whole summer of it. We do a three, three-legged one, if we put them through another summer and then we add a fourth lane, I, I just don't wanna keep doing that to them.
Right, I, I think if we were to do that second phase where you had the fourth leg going to the south, you wouldn't have to do anything with traffic, honestly, because you could just keep Radford and, um, Asbury open the whole time, you construct that road in between. And then once they had joined, you'd shut down for, you know, on Asbury, you would have the fourth leg already built in, so that could stay open. And then when you connect Radford, probably shut down for a short amount of time.
So you'd still be able to use Asbury Road?
You, yeah, during that last phase, I'd, I'd say that Asbury would probably never even be shut down.
Okay, we will, uh, we will take it back to staff and get it back to you as soon as possible. Any final comments on that? Okay, we'll move on to reports. You had the police report, GM report, park board. Motion to accept.
The move.
Second.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, I, I can't really see, we see, Karen, do you wanna start, please?
I wanna say thank you to Beth and staff for all these financial reports. I look at them and they look like there are a lot to do. So thank you, appreciate it.
Kurt?
Uh, my thunder was kinda taken away from Nate, cause I was gonna ask about the road. But since it's gonna get open tomorrow, I, I guess I don't really have anything there. I too would like to jump on that, uh, last comment and, uh, and thank you for your diligence and putting together all that stuff. It, it makes it simple for a simple person like myself.
All right, thank you, Russ.
Um, I don't have anything else tonight.
Craig?
I'm, I know that the residents of Hales Mill will be very excited about the street opening, but I do hope that our police department will have a, uh, good presence there in which maybe some of the people that have been driving through road closed signs and beating anyway, even when the road isn't even open, will take heed of that. And I hope that, I mean, I'm glad that we don't have the numbers that we feel that necess, necessitate lowering speed limits. But if things continue, we just have to remember, we might have to take other steps.
I think a large part of the city's gonna be happy to see the signs down for detours. I've been hearing more people asking and asking, it's like, it's gonna be great. So, uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, I, I would just remind that we have, uh, the open house next Tuesday. I would welcome, if not encourage you as council members to be there to, uh, meet and greet residents. So you should, just any questions, just talk to Sarah or Beth about that. But we did, you know, build that as an opportunity to talk to council members and board members and things like that. So I hope, uh, many of you can make it.
What time does that start?
Four to seven.
Thank you, four to seven. That's all I have. Beth, do you have anything?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I can walk away, Bob. Do we have a second?
Yeah, we have a motion and a second.
Bye, Russ.
You can walk away though, take over.
Well, I didn't hear it. Hang on a second. Sarah, Sarah, did you hear the second? Is it me or is it something with the audio in the room?
I heard it, but I couldn't, I can't hear Craig Miller at all. I couldn't hear him at all.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, the motion's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. All right, thank you, everyone.